For the citizens of the United States of America and truly a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Updates, police chiefs?
We had a back-to-school event yesterday. It was, there's a ton of kids there. We gave away some bikes. Jennifer Cronin had a, her family had a community night out and there were more people here this year than last year and hopefully we'll continue to improve that. They've been working on abandoned vehicles and have had success in a couple of houses. The others will continue to work on, probably have the city attorney's help. And about that, that's about it.
Fire chief?
Everything's going pretty good. After the state fair, I'll be getting with Dan, secure, locate out the fairgrounds. The fair board is wanting a storm siren moved. They want to move closer to the highway where it was originally supposed to be. So, once we get the locate, I'll get with Greg Proctor and move it. And I want to kind of coordinate that with front lines so they can be here. Raycom's going to finish putting our radio in our base station at the fire station. So I want to make sure they're here the same day so that fire, that siren stays working in working order. Other than that, that's our big hitter.
So what's the problem the fairgrounds has?
The easement.
I don't know that it's the easement as much as some of the wording in it. From a few of them I've talked to, I think if the terms wasn't so long and so great, that they would be okay with leaving it where it is for now, that if they did put something up in 10 or 12 years, we could move it there.
I'll just go on.
I mean, I'm just wondering, is it worth the effort to talk to them about that and see if that would be okay versus?
Well, last communication I got from Jeff Kim Carter, he wants to move before September 1.
I understand that, but it's a fair board decision, it's not his. So, I mean, is there something we need to address?
That's what the fair board's decided, so.
Well, I.
That was a communication I thought you were so. I'll double check on it, Dan.
I'm just curious on that part of, if we can work out an agreement on that one and not have to move it would be nice, you know? Because how do you know if you move it, it's not going to be in the way?
Or break.
Yeah, that's.
I'll double check.
Rec director's not here. Main Street?
I just, I had sent these, the market study overview to your packets. Looks like this. And this is, I had talked about this earlier. Main Street Iowa awarded us this market studies and strategies program, which is free for us. We haven't had anything done like this since 2005. The purpose of doing it is to understand the local market for current businesses and, you know, their market analysis, what they're looking to do, where they can grow. And also new entrepreneurs coming into town. It's, it's good for them to know what people want, how they like to buy it, when they like to buy it, all of the questions that, that business owners would want to know, current, you know, for their, the current businesses as well as the people coming in. So what happens is this month, it's already gone live, there's an online link to take a consumer survey. And we'll also be going to the businesses for them to take a survey as well to collect data. That survey, along with other pieces of information like prior market studies that have been done, business inventories and things like that will all be collected. We're going to have a public meeting in September, the date's to be determined, but it would be great if you want to kind of follow us along with this process and you will know kind of the outcomes of the surveys that are taken in August. And that's more of the, like I said, the current businesses and the, the consumers' overview of what they think and be part of processes we go along to be completed in November. But I just think the data is very important for you to be aware of, what we come up with. It's not really a Main Street data, it's community, community data. So I just wanted you to be aware of it and make sure you took a look at it. If you have any questions, get ahold of me.
Anything else?
Not right now. Did you want me to say anything else?
Want to cut you short?
No, I'm good. I just want, this was just important and I wanted to bring it to your attention.
W B Street?
Thank you.
DC? DC is not here. Public comments? Old business, new business. Consider and discuss wastewater treatment facility improvement plans and specifications for permit application submission. Consider approval of national pollution discharge elimination system permit application fee of $85. Consider approval of Iowa DNR wastewater disposal system construction permit application fee of $100. You're on the floor.
Hello?
Hello.
Good to see you all again. Thanks for allowing me to come back in the room again. In front of you, I have given you an abbreviated, very thin set of plans. Danny over here has a couple of full sets of plans that have all the plans, details, everything in them. And he also has the specifications. If you'd like to prove those at your leisure, talk to Danny. I didn't want to go through those page by page with you tonight, or we'd be here.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. But, the plans, if you move past the cover sheet, the first diagram in those plans is basically just a process flow diagram that's showing you what's out there and the arrows pointing in the directions that the water is flowing through the plant. So on the other side, you see a lift station flows into a splitter structure right in the middle of the page there that has a bar screen that's getting replaced. The one out there now is missing some bars, so it's not doing its job very well. And a flume that was damaged and needs to be replaced, so those are new. We're going into the lagoon cells there. It goes through the lagoons, does its treatment magic, and then goes into basically the new part of your plant, which will be the four seger cells, which are the rectangular boxes on the right side of the page. Then it will go out through the existing outfall and existing flow meter to the creek. So I don't expect you to be able to understand all that, but as you sit and study that, you can start to see exactly how the water is moving through the plants. The next page will be the one that's probably far more interesting to you. Up in the upper left-hand corner there, we are demoing the existing lab and office building that's out there right now. We took a look at it, talked to some architects about it. Their recommendation is that that building is probably not worth the renovation costs and it's probably more effective to put in a new building, a little bit larger building, instead of renovating that one and adding a new one out at the treatment plant site. So we've got a new blower building, an office, so it'll be a restroom and a shower and locker room in that building. We're going to have, right now, we're proposing a concrete entryway into that building and around the existing new maintenance building out there for the trucks to come in and out of there without tearing up all the gravel and everything. So that entryway there is indicated as new gravel, or new concrete, sorry. The first lagoon cell, the darker line running down through the middle of the first lagoon cell is a new berm. We're splitting that into two lagoons. The second lagoon, there's another new berm coming down, we'll split the second lagoon in half. The first half of it will remain lagoon. The second part of that will be turned into where the four seger cells will sit. The grade out there at the site will remain as is through those first three lagoon cells and then they'll drop down where the segers are located. And then a lot of fill material will come off of the very far western edge of the site, eastern edge of the site out there, sorry. Where the road is now, we'll be grading all that down and taking that material and using it to fill the berms. So that's kind of how the site is going to lay out within the area that you have out there. Any questions on that?
So the cement, it's going to be cement all, basically all the way around it except for?
Nope, just the entryway there. If you look at that, it's just the area around the building and around the maintenance. The rest of that will all be, it's just a gravel overlay, basically. There'll be hauling trucks in and everything else during construction, so those roads will be redone. The exception is there will be a new, a Missouri crossing out on the far side of the site where we're going to allow site drainage to get out of there, so there will be a small concrete pad there to prevent that from eroding away, allowing stormwater to drain out of there. And that's basically going to be where there's a, there's a culvert shown there right now on the western side of the site, a couple of triangles, darker triangles and a pipe going across the road. We're going to drop that down, eliminate that culvert, take some more fill material out of there. So there's two gates that show up on that. In the next page, actually, I think, will show that a little bit better. Kind of blown up on that, one side of the site there. There's two gates on the edge of the concrete that go out to the road around the lagoons. That'll be concrete and then the entryway there will be concrete. And that shows how the building will lay out in there. Be some, some new parking spaces out in front there, a new transformer and generator that will be on the, on the east side of the building. And then the lift station, we're going to put in a new trash basket and hoist there and some new grading on top of that to make that a little safer. All the lift stations right now do not meet current electrical code, so we are going to be putting in panels at those lift stations that will bring them up to code for erosion atmosphere in the proximity of those lift stations. Also with those new panels, what that will allow, it is to connect, the whole site will be accessible by the operators through tablets, computers, smartphones for remote monitoring of what's going on off the site and a little bit of control on a couple of items that they can make adjustments to the site with that. Questions on that? The next page on there is basically just a layout of the building, how that new building will look. An office built, an office space on the left side with a, a large utility sink in there for washing items and cleaning up if they need to. Then there will be a bathroom and a separate locker room and shower. And then a blower room, kind of in the middle half of the building there, and then electrical room on the far end where all the panels, electric service and everything else will be. Be a new transformer, new generator on the right, right-hand side of that building. We're going to do a metal roof on that for long-term maintenance capabilities and it'll be block building construction. And that's kind of shown, a couple of elevation drawings shown on the next page. Kind of give you an idea what the appearance of that building will look like out there. Any questions come to mind on these plans? And I know that's a quick review of what's going on. The intent of these plans and the permit applications, which are on, on this agenda item also, NPDS application, there is, what's the other application that's on there?
Wastewater disposal.
Uh, the wastewater construction permit. So the NPDS is the, is the permit. The construction permit is also included in that. And then there's an IUP application in there that goes in with those. And that's a revised IUP application. There's no fee or anything associated with that. That'll get submitted with the plans and the specifications to the DNR for them to start the process for the permit. That review process typically takes three to five months, sometimes up to six months, for them to review and issue that construction permit. So that process is taking place. We'll be looking at getting the CDBG grants applied for, that's a little bit later agenda item here, too. Hopefully that award will come out and find out and get the CDBG grant at the end of December. And then we'll get that wastewater construction permit and be able to go to bid after a period of time. There's a couple of public hearings for the grant that need to take place, so we'll be looking to bid the job early next, early next spring, hopefully. All those will be out by March. If you don't get a CDBG grant, you don't want to try again, we could bid this job as soon as probably January. Once we find out that, didn't get the award for the CDBG grant, if you want to apply again, that deadline comes up, that just pushes everything back a little bit more. So we could bid it actually sooner if you don't get a grant. That'll be, we'll have to wait and see what happens with that. Hopefully the grant will come through. The, I also put in front of you the opinion of probable cost on the project. That's coming in right now at $6.5 million. That's pretty much right in line with where we've been through the facility plan stage. There hasn't been a whole lot that's increased or decreased. We started out with a rather healthy contingency on this for unknowns. And as we get more of those known costs in there, that contingency level has dropped down, so. It's typical to see the cost stay the same and the contingency to go down, so that's what it's there for. Any questions on that?
Can you apply for the CDBG grant after you've already started the project?
No. The CDBG grant, actually, once awarded, they have to get to a point where they release funds. And Alec can probably explain this a little bit better, too. They have to release CDBG funds before we can even go to bid with the project. We can't advertise, we can't go to bid or anything until they have all their environmental review approved, all their reviews done. You guys have public hearings, there's a number of things that have to progress before we can actually get that release of funds. Once we have that, then we are free to go bid. If we do anything before that, then you're basically eligible for the funding at that point. Good question.
I just wondered, if you didn't get it the first time, do you have to wait?
Yeah, if you want it, then you have to wait. And I think the maximum you're eligible for out of that grant is $600,000, so it's about 10%. So it is, it's not insignificant, but it's not like 50% guaranteed.
Now, is there any extra strings that come with the CDBG grant beyond what you have here?
Yep, there's more reporting requirements, there's Davis Bacon wage rates that apply. SRF has those too, so that doesn't really make that more expensive. What else?
How much does the extra fat come with the CDBG add to the project?
Less than 10%.
Yeah, because you have to have Davis Bacon wages anyways, that's where that cost would be for the SRF loan, so that's really, if you weren't.
It used to be that way, but now that SRF has added the Davis Bacon requirements in there, SRF has Buy American requirements, which also raise the cost. The only way that it would really be beneficial for the city is to find a way to privately finance it and not go through SRF or CDBG and eliminate those requirements. That would be where you'd see probably a 5% reduction.
The CDBG ends up adding as much or more than it's worth?
It's mostly in the upfront and then the administrative side and it's tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands that would be added, so.
Yeah, we usually do, for $600,000 is $25,000 for our administration over, up to a three-year, you know? So we would try to keep it as tight as possible.
We bid, go to bid in January or wait till March or April? What's the extra cost and wait how long to bid?
That is so variable right now that I couldn't even begin to tell you what that would be.
And that's the other, because, you know what I'm saying, is that I'll wait though?
Yeah. This year, with the winter that we had and the spring that we had, contractor bids have been higher in general across the board. And my experience with the projects I've bid this year, it's been 5 to 10% higher than our estimates on those jobs.
But I'm just saying, if somebody's in January, if they're bidding and they don't have a lot of stuff coming in, they're, I will give you a decent price. If they have a bunch of work come in and that's April, it could cause their bids to go up.
Yep. The, the advantage, yeah, and that's why it's so, it's so unpredictable. What we're looking at, and I'll talk about this briefly in the, in the, in the next agenda item with the integrated plant, is we're going ahead and scheduling this project over two years. So we're looking to have a completion date of October 2021 and allow, so if contractor goes to bid that in April, they know they have the next season too, so if they're booked up next year with work, they can really get after it the next year. It's not, the project should not take two years to build, but we're going to allow that flexibility for the contractors, so hopefully we can get good pricing to allow them to start later on in the year and have winter work for next year.
Now, how is the function of the plant going to work during the building process?
The existing plants and lagoons will have to remain online and meet limits throughout construction, and that's spelled out to the contractors. And we have a construction sequencing plan in here for demolition of, well, draining them out, getting rid of the sludge out of the lagoons, building the berms and moving on gradually down to where the existing lagoons, during summertime, warm weather, with the smaller capacity, won't have any trouble meeting limits. And now, at that point, they'll be able to build the seger system on there and start flow going through that. So as far as the sequencing goes, we have a way to kind of construct and, and keep everything operating as they go. And when they drain those lagoons down strategically, as they do that, they drain them down, they have, if it's dry, they have 30 to 45 days to fill the lagoon back up again with water. If it's really wet, that time goes down significantly, but the, it should, we've done a number of them this way with these lagoons, where we get them pumped down, we get stuff filled in the lagoons and then the lagoons just continue to function. They don't have to meet the new limits until the completion date, so.
Motion to approve the two permits. Who's going to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider and discuss wastewater system integrated plan report.
I gave you a copy of the draft integrated plan. I wanted to get this in front of you because this, this document has long-term planning implications for the city, but it's something that we need to address and need to get the DNR approval. In your current NPDS permit that got issued, you were issued a compliance schedule. In that compliance schedule, they told the city you have to meet these new element limits out of your treatment plant and you have to eliminate all SSOs in the town by 2021. I'm not mistaken, I think that's the date, the compliance date that's in there. So you have to do all this work. To work, the budget estimated to do that work is far in excess, so it's city going to avoid. And so the approach that we've started out coming in here and communicated to you guys last year at some point, I believe, was we're going to tackle the treatment plant first. The environmental benefits of treating water every day to meet the limits every day outweigh the few times a year that we might have SSOs in the sanitary sewer system. And the cost for the wastewater treatment plant with the system that we've designed with this type of plant, utilizing the lagoons and going with the seger system after the lagoons, there's, there's very, very minimal, and we're talking less than about 3% of cost savings in that plant to reduce flows going to it before we design it. That's not the case with all technologies out there. Some of them are more driven by flow, so if your flow is really, really high, it really impacts the performance and the sizing of a different type of treatment system. So eliminating all of the SSOs today would change the design of the treatment plant out there by a very, very minor, 1% to 2%, 3% construction cost total. It wouldn't affect the performance and operation of that system at all. So that's what the approach we're taking is let's spend this money now and get that treatment plant built, because that's the plant that will have moving forward into the future. That doesn't address the sanitary sewer issues. Those need to be addressed also. So this integrated plan is basically laying out to the DNR what the plan is. Plan is to build the treatment plant and then while we're building the treatment plant, evaluate the sewer system and develop a list of projects out of the sewer system that we can do and then when we're going to be able to afford to do them in the process. So the debt service load that comes with the sewer treatment plant is not quite the maximum affordability of what the rate payers in the city can afford to pay. So the, the state says that 2% of the median household income is the affordable level for rate payers to pay, for revenue bonds essentially to help hand maintenance and everything else that goes into the sewer and water services they have. So it's not quite the maximum with the plan, but it's close. It leaves about $2 million over the next 20 years while you're paying off the sewer debt to pay for sewer improvement projects also. $2 million total over 20 years. So that's what the integrated plan is basically laying out to the DNR is the city can afford this much more in the sewer, so we're going to spread that out and in 2042, the city will be able to spend a little bit more money because the debt on the sewer treatment plant will be retired at that point. And so whatever sewer improvements are left to get rid of the SSOs will be pushed out in time to 2042 and beyond. That kind of makes sense. That's where the, that's what the strategy of this integrated plan is. In this, there, I'll just have you pull, there's a 1017 sheet in here in that integrated plan, go to the page right before that. So this will hopefully visually show you a little bit better what I just kind of explained. In fiscal year 2020 slash 2021, depending on how you guys want to proceed with that, we're looking at spending $12,000 in bidding the wastewater treatment plant and $3.9, $3.7 million split over those two years for the wastewater treatment plant. That's the capital that you guys are spending on engineering and construction and any other costs associated with the, the building of that new wastewater treatment plant. Below here, and these are outlined in the rest of the text of the report, when you have a chance to prove that, there is flow monitoring, televising, GIS data collection and condition assessment of the sewer, hydraulic and hydral, hydrologic and hydraulic modeling of the sewer system, a sanitary sewer improvement plan, lake impoundment INI reduction and sewer improvements, phase one and phase two. The yellow highlighted boxes on there indicate the engineering fees associated with that. The orange is the bidding fees and the green would be construction. So what we're looking at here through year 2025 is $150,000 for phase one sewer improvements that would happen in 2020. And then 2023 and 2024 is a half million dollars each one of those years. And then 2024 and 2025, a half million dollars in each of those years. So if those projects are pushed out a couple of years after the study is completed and those projects are identified, we're calling them phase one and phase two, we don't even know what those look like at this point. So in the interim here, what we are suggesting and recommending that be done is that we start getting detailed information on the sewer system, identify where the inflow areas, where the infiltration areas are. Start a public outreach program, look at your ordinances and look at different languages in the ordinances to make sure we're eliminating some pumps, eliminating drains, looking at point of sale, type inspection, things when a house sells or changes hands, that there are inspections of the, of the laterals of the indoor plumbing and everything else. Start a program, trying to get as much voluntary participation in extraneous flow reduction that we can get out of the residents and out of the community to start hoping to knock down some of these SSO numbers, reduce some of the flow in the sewer system. The more voluntary participation we can get, the better. Meanwhile, whatever the operators in the plant, the public work staff is doing now for televising and cleaning and liming and identifying holes and pipes and that sort of stuff, that sort of stuff on an annual budget continue to happen so that as we get down the road several years, hopefully the problem has lessened itself kind of on its own, more or less, with a lot of help from everybody. And there's less work to be done down the road with this. So we're trying to kick the can on the sewer repair and separation projects, trying to push that down the road as far as we can to make it more affordable for the city to actually be able to do those INI projects. for the city to actually be able to do those INI projects.
When we say sewer repair, what do we mean?
There, if there are, as the sewer ages, you get cracks in the pipe, you get root penetration, you get joints that separate, you get a lot of extra flow that comes in.
Replacing it.
And replacing the pipe, lining the pipe. Manholes, the same thing. You get cracks, you get, you have open holes in your manhole covers. You have cracks on the side, you get water that comes into those two. Lining manholes, also we're replacing manholes. In town here with the terrain, all the pipes are bedded in rock generally. And so you can have water that is flowing downhill on the ground in that rock and getting to a low spot and then finding a hole and getting in there. So you basically outside have groundwater, pond it up and it's just continually pouring into pipes all the time. So there, the flow metering and all indications from that flow record are that when it rains, the flow comes up at the plant and then it goes back down, indicating that there's a lot of inflow into the sewer, which is direct connections either through roof drains, sub pumps, private laterals with area drains on in their yards, anything like that that goes into the garage. I mean, you can have a garage that has a door where when it rains, water leaks under the door and goes into a drain, a floor drain in the garage. And just that type of stuff contributes well into the system. The INI, I think, is getting a little better handle on it. I know the staff has been looking for areas where there are fiber optics drilled through the sewer pipe or something. And they're finding those types of things with the televising and fixing most times.
Is there much we can do with the laterals or is, that's on the homeowner?
That's on the homeowner. In the, in the report here, there is a program that's out there that the city can basically offer a lateral replacement program. It's a fee. So the homeowners pay a fee, but then if something needs to be done to the lateral, the city takes care of that. And there's programs and different things like that that have been done. The ordinances with the point of sale, type inspections and stuff have been one thing that several different communities have done so that.
That's an issue where we basically force them to replace it.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, the law doesn't allow it to delay the sale of the home, but at least there's some grounds there for which you can get in there. Some cities have offered a cost sharing where they, they will contribute a certain percentage or a certain dollar amount to homeowners that voluntarily come forward and say, I'm going to replace my lateral. Who knows there's a problem with that. So there's, there's different ways to do that. And that's, that's one of the things that the public outreach portion of what we're looking to do, I'll start to explain that not only to you guys, but to, to the community as well, of what things, what things can be done with those things. So it all, it benefits the entire community to, to start working on that and trying to get the service connections in the lateral, sub pump disconnects, that sort of thing are, are all, all going to benefit everyone because it helps keep those rates, long-term rates down as much as possible. So this document, the, the basic purpose of putting this on the agenda tonight and talking to you about this tonight is to get this draft in front of you to, to take a look at it, mainly the, the charts with the money related and the schedule on how, what that's going to look like. And we'll discuss this more before we submit it because once this report does get submitted to the DNR, if they approve it, it does become binding. So if you say in 2040 or 2025, you're going to do a half million dollars worth of sewer projects, you have to do a half million dollars worth of sewer projects. Or they're in violation of the plan. So I don't, we don't want to rush into submitting this. We want you to make sure that you're comfortable with what this looks like and what the plan is. And it's, it's my job, my role to try to help you guys understand what we're doing and make sure that you guys have clear understanding before we go forward with pinning anything with it. Any other questions on that?
Add all these numbers up, by 2025, we're at 10 and a half million. Is that right?
I believe so.
Yep. And at the end of 2021, we're at 8.2?
Mm-hmm.
That's part of the graph from 6.5.
The, the 6.5 is the construction estimate on the treatment plant.
So.
The, the IUP application that we are turning in or that, that will go in with plans and specs is for eight and a half million dollars. The reason that it's for eight and a half million dollars is because there is the sponsored project. I think that's maybe the next step item on the agenda here. The sponsored project is the clean water, stormwater improvement, stormwater quality money that's available as the interest off of your construction loan. And do you guys understand that?
There's other forms of financing and other grants and stuff like that that's supposed to make up the difference of that?
So the, the IUP application that we're submitting includes money for about a million dollars worth of solar panels added out of the wastewater treatment plant. The reason that we've added that in there is so that that IUP application goes in higher. The sponsored project money, if you're awarded that based on the application that we will be submitting for that, you are eligible to get this reduction 10%, right? 10% of the project cost of your loan amount in basically forgivable loan to pay for that project.
Face a million to get 650,000?
Spend a million to get 100,000. So if we spend eight million, we get 800,000.
That's what I mean. So with 6.5, you spend a million.
Yeah, yep, exactly. 650,000. So the IUP application is going in at eight and a half million dollars. That includes all engineering, the solar fields, wastewater treatment plant, everything else. What that does is when SRF, if they award the sponsored project to you guys, you'd be eligible to 850,000 dollars worth of sponsored project money to do clean water quality projects throughout town.
Have I missed the meeting or did we never talk about doing any solar out there before tonight?
We've not, and I'll be happy to explain, but I don't want to interrupt Matt.
Yeah, and it's not, I'm not obligating you guys to do anything. And I know it hasn't been discussed. It was something that we threw in because the IUP application, what you get is you get 10% of the lower amount of the IUP application or the construction cost. So once that project bids, you get 10% of what that cost is. Or if the IUP application is lower than that, you get 10% of that. So if we submit an application for, say, $400,000 in the IUP to get you guys on the intended use plan for $400,000, if we bid a sewer treatment plant that comes in at 6.5 million dollars, you'll only get 400,000 because you only get 10% of what the lower of the IUP application or the construction cost is. So we went ahead and put the IUP application in higher because there's no obligation whatsoever. If the, if the solar field doesn't happen at all, is not even a consideration or a thought, it doesn't matter. We take it that automatically comes out, we bid, our cost is lower, you'll get 10% of what we bid lower. So the IUP application, it's to your benefit to put in a higher amount there potentially than what you think the project will even end up costing. So there's, there's no ramifications of putting in that IUP application a little bit higher. So that was the, that's why that happened. And I know that hasn't been discussed. And if you want Chris to explain it, you can explain that now too.
Do you want to talk about that at all?
Sure. I don't like being blind side.
No, I know, it was no intent to blindside. And which is something we've been talking about back and forth internally, just as a thought. But so there is a possibility that if you put in about, I think the number was 100 KW of solar out there, it would supply the energy required for the plant, right? So that makes an ineligible cost under the SRF loan and therefore potential, you know, for the, for the sponsored project. If you use that solar and, and the solar and storage, so if you use that solar and storage right, you could potentially offset peak and it would reduce the total cost of your electricity out there. So that's why we put it out there just as a thought. It's not one of those things that we, we haven't put specs together. We haven't done, spent any money thinking through design or anything like that. It was just, we know that this is a possibility, that you could use this amount of power legitimately to power the plant. You combine that with storage, it could, it could lower your peak cost. So we just want to have it as an option. You don't have to do it. You're not obligated to do it. You can reject it. But if you decided you wanted to do it, it becomes an eligible cost and increases, it reduces your power costs and increases the potential for your sponsored project. It's just, right now, it's just a thought line. That's all it is.
Well, that don't make sense. I just guess.
We need, it's just, we've never talked about it. It's just sort of out of the slot.
That's why the numbers are inflated over what we talked about. I guess I was just that, wanting to know why.
Yeah.
Because I've seen solar construction up here. How many gallons a day goes out the wastewater treatment?
350.
What's that?
350.
Yeah, 350 dry average day, up to two, two and a half million, I think, when it's raining.
Can we use that to generate power?
I haven't seen that done.
That's been going long. No, that's not a ridiculous thought.
There's a steady flow. There are, right, there are, I mean, there's pipelines, turbines and stuff that you could use.
I have not seen that.
Matt, if you have a new council number two, can you show them Roman number two dash one, the timeline for the integrated project? Do they have that one? What we're talking about?
We're going to throw out new ideas.
It would be a minimal amount. It wouldn't be a large amount.
Yeah.
That amount of flow. You're even surprised I brought it up.
I'm glad you did.
On page two dash one is the consent order compliance schedule. And these, these are the dates that are in the compliance schedule that was issued to the city.
I asked Matt to bring this up because we are receiving calls now at City Hall about, because now the fee's gone, you know, so they're getting their sewer fee, talking about that. And so they were asking, you know, are we being, are the people paying the fees, being penalized to be able to make decisions faster? You know, how come we're just now building it? And basically this talks about that timeline where you're cited in 16. You know, HRG didn't come in until September or March 18, right? So could have been done a year sooner, maybe, you know, all that kind of stuff. So that's just, I wanted to show that date.
The consent agreement compliance dates are shown in the second column there, status of what's been submitted and completed to date and then the anticipated completion date of all those items down to completion of the wastewater treatment plant and achieving compliance limits shown anticipates October 2021 and November of 2021. We're putting those dates in this compliance schedule, as I mentioned, to, to give ourselves two construction seasons, hopefully, to get the plant built and anticipating there may be a little bit of delay in going to bid because of the CBG grant projects. So we're pushing those back beyond what the stated completion dates are in the compliance schedule. So if the DNR approves this integrated plan, that would give you that extra time in your schedule to get the treatment plant.
So you're talking about like the sub pumps and stuff that's going into it that's not supposed to be, is that SSO?
Yeah.
I think that's a lot of the questions you're getting is more the fact of why it hasn't that been addressed sooner than it has been to try to eliminate some cost in building the plant. I think it's more what you're, this is what I've heard from the public more than anything is why haven't we tried to do some of that sooner to eliminate some cost in the plant? Because if you didn't have all that, you wouldn't have to build the plant. But I mean, I think we are building for some expansion. I mean.
Yeah, minimal, minimal.
I mean, I don't think it's a big thing, but I think what Danny was talking about, I think what the public's biggest thing is, why haven't we been working on that? Knowing that that was a problem for a long time. Why hasn't that been addressed soon?
And that, that extra flow, and that's what I introduced at the beginning. That's what I started with. Even if we had that flow reduced, it doesn't really have an impact on the size and the cost of the actual treatment plant we're building today.
But I think when we originally talked, that was discussed. And I think that's where the information's coming from the public is they think we could save a couple of million if we didn't have all that.
Right.
So is this, this plant that we're building, is it big enough to accommodate it? Like the housing project you're looking at are really successful? Get some commercial development? I mean, do we have some capacity in there?
Yes, yep. The lagoons have the capacity in them. The Sager system has the capacity in it as well. They're not right now recognized, the Sagers are not recognized for what they're capable of treating. So what ends up happening in a system like this is you will demonstrate compliance with the limits, even though you'll start to see your flow and load increase beyond what your permitted capacity is. But they can't force you to do anything or they won't force you to do anything until you start to violate your limits. The Sagers are sized, for example, from beauty, they're sized to take 50 milligrams per liter of beauty to a Sager plant. The reality is a lagoon will discharge typically in the summertime between five and 10 milligrams per liter of beauty to the Sagers. So it does not seem near the amount of load that it's actually used every single day. And those, the Sager rock beds that we've gone in and inducted some of, some of the rock, we're not seeing any plugging, we're not seeing any bacteria growth on the rocks because they're not giving enough load into them. If they actually got load and started to grow a lot of bacteria in them, you would have to really increase your load way higher than what it is right now based on the design numbers. So there is with the space that we're, that we're keeping out there unused. If the town doubles in size, we actually have enough space to add more reactors and be able to do what you need to do with that. Or there's plenty of space out there still and you could put in a separate, completely separate plant, separate your list station. So one list station went to the current plant and another list station went to a smaller package.
We wouldn't have to do it all over again.
No, we wouldn't have to do it all over again. You could keep what you have and just add another modular unit to it. If you saw that type of expansion, if a big wet industry wanted to come to town and was going to pay you to add to your treatment plant, it would use space and capability to do that.
So what, do you need any motion tonight on this?
I do not need any motion on the integrated plan at all. All I want is to make sure that you guys all take a chance and peruse through this a little bit to gain a little bit better understanding. And then I'll schedule to come down again after you've had a chance to look at it and maybe bullet point out some different points and, and get some of that affordability stuff a little bit easier to understand. I'm going to be looking at some of the, one thing, the one big piece that's not in here right now is the integrated plan, the purpose of this is to demonstrate that you can afford to do it. Right now, the report outlines the revenue side of things. So can you have any bonds that you would get? You're at the maximum affordability. But this report doesn't address the fact that you guys have GO debt, two that you can, that you can accumulate. So the DNR is going to want to know that you're spending that money somewhere else that it's useful. So the, the integrated plan takes into account streets, parks, water, any other needs that the city has to actually spend money for senior improvements. You don't want to spend it all on the wastewater plant for the next 20 years and let everything else go. So this integrated plan shows that you're spending money and you can't afford to spend anymore because you have other needs that you need to address. So this report will grow a little bit and will include some of that stuff in it also. But we need a. But we needed, I wanted to get this, the sewer aspect of it in front of you so you can see kind of what we're looking at. And I don't anticipate bringing you guys any more contracts this year for approval for doing the television or doing the sewer management plan or anything else that's kind of outlined in here. But we'll be talking about that and bringing that step forward to you for consideration, probably early next year would be my guess, to keep that, keep the train moving forward.
Do we need to approve the permits?
That was permit, the permit was approved. So this was the integrated plan.
You need one of these abbreviations, charts on every page.
Yeah, I know.
That's all it is, is abbreviation.
We love our abbreviations. That's all on that item, if there's no more questions, the next one's me too, and then I will sit down and shut up. The.
Here, I better.
Yep.
Consider and discuss resolution authorizing the filing of a sponsored project application with the Iowa DNR matched resources and Iowa Financiatory State revolving money.
This is the sponsored project that we've referenced a couple times that if, if awarded the sponsored project, you can, are eligible for up to ten percent of what the construction loan for the lesser guy, which will probably be your construction loan. Ten percent of that construction loan, you're eligible to pay for a sponsored project, which would be a clean water quality project in town. That would basically be, instead of paying the interest back, you'd get this project instead. So it costs the same as what your wastewater treatment plant loan does and you get an extra project out of it, that's essentially what that means. So we have done a watershed assessment, basically, we've come down and looked it down and identified a myriad of different projects, from permeable pavement in places to stormwater detention and stormwater quality improvements and different things in several different areas in town and included those in, in the sponsored project application that will go into the DNR. That doesn't, again, doesn't bind you to any of those projects. If you're eligible for up to, say, we do get up to eight million dollars or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that doesn't mean you have to spend, I'm sorry, we have way more than six hundred and fifty thousand dollars where the project's identified in the water quality assessment. So what we do is we try to identify projects that are gonna give you guys a very attractive proposal, an application for the sponsored project. Once awarded that money, then we sit down and we decide what projects we're gonna do. We're gonna hand pick from this list of projects that we've identified and pick one or two of them that makes sense that you guys feel are a benefit to the community and are gonna help out on the stormwater quality aspect. So the, the application that we're looking for is just to send in this application, we're looking for a resolution to approve us to submit the application. And if awarded that, then we'll sit down and start talking about what we actually are looking at for those projects. Does that make sense?
That's the one there was a proposed resolution in here, I think.
But this is the one that, if we don't find a project, we're one, we're not violating, we have to do it. This is the one for this, what we're talking about right now. A couple of maps. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Darren?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Have any other questions that come up, you'll free, to let me know?
Discuss and give direction for the base D rate structure for paying for the wastewater treatment cell of the upgrade.
I'm Heidi Cole with American Securities, um, here a couple months ago where we had a lengthy discussion where we talked about, um, funding this six and a half million dollar project. Does everybody have an packet, this sheet in front of you? Good. And what we, and what we came up with this is, is to have an increase on the base in the flow, it was eight dollars on rate through the thirty six flow, which was discussed previously. Today, I wanted to bring a few scenarios in front of you to look at what the remainder of that increase will look like once we find those final bids come in, um, and find out what the CDPG grant is. And to see what that final loan amount will be. Try to get a direction from the council on how we want that rate increase to look like. Uh, right now, the sewer fund is currently funded seventy percent on that base rate and approximately twenty-two percent on that core rate. Um, and then with that, that final eight percent is, is miscellaneous revenues. So what you have in front of you to, uh, today is, uh, funding that six and a half million dollar project through the Iowa Finance Authority, through the state revolving fund. Current rates are at one point seven five percent with a quarter percent servicing rate, which is essentially a two percent rate over twenty years. To fund that, um, you have to have rates in place with a one hundred and ten percent coverage of that principal and interest payment. So what that means is that your rates has to be in place to make the payment plus another ten percent after your, um, operating expenditures. What you have now here, um, with these proposed rate increases, if you look at that box, currently with your usage rate at eight and then the base rate at thirty-six, the minimum bill does include three thousand gallons, um, in that, in that base rate. Some initial discussions I had with Gary, you know, we asked, you know, is, when you, when you fund a sewer fund, is it typical that you fund seventy percent of it with your base and, you know, twenty-two percent of it with your flow? When you look at the, that the city has three thousand gallons in the minimum, that's a typical, um, that's a typical amount for the base to fund, is it seventy percent? Now that you're looking to change, uh, put some rate increases in place, I put a couple scenarios, um, to see, uh, how you wanna fund it. This middle column where it says fifty fifty, will fund that six and a half million dollar project. And also take into account additional operating expenditures, um, expected with this facility. Then also get you in that coverage that I talked about, and then also assume that you'll have forty-five thousand in future capital expenditures annually. What it does is it will keep that funded at that seventy twenty-two percent, so seventy percent on the base, twenty-two percent on the flow. So you're looking at, um, an estimated, uh, base rate of forty-four ninety-seven and a usage rate of ten thirty-two. That keep you funded at the sewer as it currently is. And then down below, you'll see the user impacts base off of, uh, the usage, the gallon usage. So you'll see, um, as, um, as your usage goes up, it goes up at a higher rate. So if you look to the right, there's a shift to the base where you're going to have, uh, a little bit more on that base, base rate, and then I have a five percent shift to the flow. So instead of seventy percent on the base, it's going up to seventy-five percent on the base or sixty-five percent on the base. Today, I wanted to kind of get those numbers in front of you so you could take a look at that, what that impact would be for each different type of users. I believe it's about eighty percent of the users in the city of Bloomingdale are at that minimum rate, that's correct. And, um, so those that are above that three thousand, um, are more impacted, um, with that flow, that flow.
Danny, who do we, who, I guess, or how many do we have of these five, ten, twenty thousand?
We have, we have about nine hundred and twenty-five, I think the last number I saw was nine twenty-two, nine twenty-five for the three thousand level max. I mean, that's where they're, we have a total of about twelve hundred and, how was it, forty-three?
Sixty-one.
Twelve hundred and sixty-one. So you, you have a difference of about three hundred.
Do we have any idea how that, like, do we have anyone at twenty thousand? I don't.
Hospital and schools are the big ones.
I was at forty a month ago.
You know, if there's, if there's a.
There's about twenty of them that are really big, there's about twenty that are really big.
One of the things to think about, um, as you put the increase on the base or the flow, um, like, how something to think about is when, when the increase is on more of the flow, it's those who are using the system pay for more of the system, and you put more of the increase on the base, you're affecting, uh, those who are, um, are low users, a lot of times those will be people on fixed income, um, so.
I would assume all of our three thousand are probably.
Mostly residential, but, you know, there could be some small, you know, there could be some small, you know, business, if it's just a warehouse with, with a toilet in it, then that would be a low user. I know we started that discussion a couple months ago, you know, where I was looking to the council to get some directions, right, is, does the council have, um, a preference on keeping the fund funded as it is, at seventy percent on the base, twenty-two on the flow? Or would you like to shift it a five percent either way?
I like the last scenario.
The shift, the shift to the base.
And I'd like to see you go five percent the other way, do you see? So.
I hate to see it burdened anymore on the, the fixed income.
I guess I would. Be the base.
Yeah, I, I would get it a couple ways, one, I think it's probably, there's three thoughts that come to my mind, one is, I think you have probably the fewer fixed income, um, residential stuff that we affect, probably the better. The other is, I could have this all on, this is a lot of information to digest, but it seems like the problem is the, what's necessitating a lot of this is the flow, the inflow, and so it seems reasonable to, or based on that. And the other thing is, I just always look at it, if, if you spread a cost, if most of the people above three thousand are sort of income generating, it's never as simple as this, but they have the opportunity to pass some of the cost on to the consumer, so that, you know, ultimately kind of the residents are paying for it.
The ones that stop the sub pumps, stop the extra water into your system is causing the problem.
That's true, and that, that's another part is, is, is we're not really, we're only, I mean, that's exactly right, we're only measuring here in off the mean, we're not measuring out. That, that is true, I, I think one way to deal with that is, and it's, it's, it's tough, but, uh, some code enforcement, some, I know we're tough, of course, but, uh, yeah, they're, 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 are, those, those homes are probably the ones with the age laterals that are infiltrating too, and, um, I mean, that's, that's all.
Another point to think about is, when you have more of your super fund, um, funded by the base, it's more, it's stable. You can project your revenues a little, a little more soundly.
Thank you.
One point to consider, um, in putting, you know, all the information.
I, I guess with, if you're looking at moving in one way or the other, the only fair way is leaving the way it's at.
Fifty fifty.
Well, there also is something to think about from an economic development perspective, that we are, I don't know how big of an impact this is, but if, if you are impacting possible, possible industry, if we had a, we had a high user come in, our plant.
You'd probably have.
You'd have a negotiation.
You'd have a negotiation, and also, um, more than likely would discuss pre-treatment before discharge to begin.
Lot to think about, um, uh, however, um, we're looking at what needs inquiries in, you know, right around the time that, uh, depending on the timeline, when that construction goes, this comes in place, we finalize those numbers, um, it'd be, it'd be one less thing to figure out and then get those, to go get that ordering in place, um, if we, if we know what the council wants to go with that direction.
Just rough calculations, the fifty fifty split looks like it's more of the same percentage increase. So like, if I did the math right, five percent shift to usage on twenty thousand gallons, it's like a fifty percent increase in the middle. But if you go over to the fifty fifty, more like a third, and then to the three thousand gallons is more than twenty percent.
For, for our community, probably staying fifty fifty is probably the best thing to do.
Most users are gonna see in, what, about a nine dollar increase?
Are there any other thoughts? Yeah, again, you know, uh, first time I came out and talked about this, it seemed, it seemed a little bit of a, um, uh, split, um, and while, while a decision doesn't have to be tonight, um, there's one thing to kind of look at, the shift to the usage versus the shift to the base. You're looking at, you know, approximately a six dollar difference per month on eighty percent of users. Which can be significant for some and insignificant, you know, for others too. And when, when the fund is so highly, um, when it's at seventy percent on that base, the shifts are smaller, um, for the base. But when you shift on the flow, it, um, it's a bigger percentage increase because of that, um, smaller percent of the fund.
Yeah, I don't know. It was, sort of shift and pile along one way or the other, even in the middles.
The 50-50 is about, if I'm doing the math right, is about the same percentage increase for everybody. 5% shift to base, most, most users are going to see a, a 1/3 increase in the bill.
Like you said, it's more stable. So if I figure that right, it's an average $13.80 per 1,000. You take the base, then you add the first, then you add the 1,000, divide it by four. That's about an average. I, I personally never come close to the base usage, so.
Rate increases are, you know, one of the hardest things for councils to do, and, you know, I'll acknowledge that, that these, these increases are, are not, you know, already hearing some feedback on, on this project. These rate increases, you know, keeping it at, at where it's at, it's funded exactly like it is. Those increases are just percentage based off where you're at. If there isn't any strong position to shift five, you know, 5% one way or the other, the 50-50 is keep, you know, keeping it funded the way it is. It's funded well. But if, if there's an opposition either way, you know, now's the time to talk about it.
So the 50-50 is going to end our revenue if we go off the gallons? We normally use now 290,000 a year.
That sounds right.
And what's our payment?
The payment is, is currently estimated at
Eighty-four, ninety-five.
The payment for the six and a half million will be 396,000.
A year?
And keep in mind that there's the 1, the 110 covenant, so you'll have another 10% on top of that, is what revenues will have to generate. And then also, you'll also have your regular operating expenditures.
So we need 396 plus 10%. Plus the 45,000. What we need to have.
Well, and you're, in 2,000, well, so your total operating revenues in
We got that sheet you got.
Yep. How many were we looked at the last night?
We're supposed to bring it back.
Sorry about that.
So how much, the rate, how much were the rate increases generated yet?
I'm calculating it by 185,000.
So you've put the, the rate increase just recently put into place. Rates prior to that were 610 to, 610 on the flow, and then minimums on 6. So now you're up to $8. Now the rates are currently $8 and 36. So if, you know, you're looking at, you know, you're looking at approximately $18 on that base, raise overall, and then you're looking at a $4 increase on the flow. On that 50-50.
The first of the new rate increases, well, actually, the bills will be sent out next year. Or for what, it's the July bill. For July usage, we're showing in next month's bill.
So when are you wanting this rate structure to go into effect? Christmas present?
So the rate structure will go into effect once, once we know the final, the final numbers of the bids, the C2B grant, then we'll go ahead, do a rerun of the numbers to check the revenues and expenditures, and then put the rate, that final rate increase in based off of that. And that's, you know, kind of based off of your, you know, the timing of the project, and then the, you know, the rate increase that went into effect just now, what it's doing is getting partially that rate increase in place, so you can start generating some of those revenues, so that you can ultimately lower those borrowing costs, so you can pay for some of those engineering, design expenses upfront and have, lock them into that 20-year-long. Any thoughts or any, anything I can answer at least?
I'd like to make the motion we stay with the 50-50 break.
At this point, that'd be the correction. Is that a second? Are we in a motion or just kind of give correction?
Discuss and give correction.
I guess the direction would be the 50-50. That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'd say.
Call the board.
I think that's
We're good at it.
Perfect. Thanks for having me come tonight. If there's any questions, please feel free to reach, reach out to me. I'll, I'll be staying in contact as this project goes along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Consider approval of change order number one with durish construction for the proposed water main and waste water improvements, Division Two Sanitary Sewer, 18 WS 026 in the amount of $6,838.32 savings.
Larry's here, Larry Stevens here, our engineer with HRG's here to discuss the change order.
Of interest, I've been looking at the revised sheets and the plans that show the relocation of the sanitary sewer on, it's all on Jefferson Street. The, the reason for the relocation was to avoid gas main in the parking and a variety of holes. You see, the relocation into the street requires some additional work, obviously to remove and replace pavement, but eliminate some items for sidewalk replacement, dragwood replacement, and that type of thing. One of the other unknown savings to the city is the cost of somehow handling the relocation of the, of the gas main in the location where it was originally designed, and whatever to do with holes that were out there. In some cases, the sewer was designed to include holes. So anyway, eliminates a lot of hassles for the city, and, and you get a half of a new street this way. The, in addition to relocating sewer on Jefferson, sewer was eliminated at the intersection of West Street and North Street, determined after the design that, that was already been replaced some time ago. So eliminates about 100 feet of sewer and a couple man, a couple manholes. So in that result, it isn't too bad, but the loan increase of $6,800 eliminates a lot of hassles. Worth of the day for being approved. So, for your interest on
You said it eliminated some of what we was going to have to do?
Look at the, I took a spreadsheet on, on the second sheet of the change order. Spreadsheet that shows, and then we've got all the dead items in the contract, and then the next columns are the contract amounts, including the quantities and unit prices for all the bid items. And then the second part of that is the, let me get the right one out here. Second part of that are the changes that go along with that, with that change order. Some quantities are decreased, some of them are increased, and at the bottom, there's a couple of, of new items. One of those is traffic control. Because we're moving the sewer into the street, there'll be additional detour route that needs to be created, and that's $2,200. And then because we're also putting the manholes in the street, instead of in the parking, casting needs to be changed in manholes. There are flooded casting, there are three-piece casting that flows with the pavement goes up and down, the lid goes up and down with it. So there's, and that was like $575 per casting, for that additional cost for the cast. That was actually, otherwise, a little long for net to no, no additional cost of that event for those casts. You can go down through there. Also, the contractor agreed, because of the reduction of hassle for him, he lowered the price for all of the pipes. The 10-inch pipe, he lowered by $5.50 per foot. That was $5,500, and then the 8-inch pipe, he reduced it by $3.58. So you can see, the contractor recognized the fact that they were going to save time and money.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Was where's the savings we're going to get from the less work there?
Yep. Big, big savings for the city. We didn't, you know, we didn't try to quantify, but the city will not spend there as much time out there dealing with this. Anyway, that, that shows the pluses and minuses for all the contract items that are affected by this change. And the other, the other items that are attached there is simply the verification of some subcontractor supply costs. Any questions?
I'd made a motion to pay the $6,158.25. Bill of action for
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Consider approval of change order number two with durish construction for the proposed water main and waste water improvements, Division Two Sanitary Sewer, 18 WS 026 in the amount of $1,013.97.
You look at the last page on the change order, you see the plan sheet for the sanitary sewer reconstruction on Parkview, and you'll see that on the left-hand side, it indicated that it's a dead-end manhole, and there is instruction to determine that it's not a dead-end manhole, actually, it continues on through that manhole. So, you know, all of the, the parts and pieces of the manhole are pre-cast, and there's an invert cast into the bottom of the base of the manhole, and manhole delivered, standard dead-end manhole, so it only had an invert going one way, the downside of the manhole. So with the flow-through, it needs to have the invert going all the way through the base, requires a, a new base to be brought in, and the old one taken back and put in stock. It's a fairly common situation, so it's just a matter of restocking it. The total cost of that replacement, $1,013.97, and there was some discussion I heard today that maybe the city would just keep that, that, that base, use somewhere else, and some other manhole, so that, that will be discussed later, but this will take care of that, and maybe the city can make a deal to save some money on the recommendation to be approved. They don't have much options.
Go for it. Second.
How'd they get this?
I can't answer that. I didn't design it.
Jack?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Thank you. The manhole's already in. Maybe you held up today.
Yeah, I worked out about six times today.
So I was just wondering how it got
I'd have been for that.
My question.
Was that?
How we didn't know it was a flow-through. I, 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 I can't answer that question. That's my question, more than the state government. Can anybody answer that question? Anybody want to answer that question? If nobody wants to state, just false it.
Consider and discuss with HR Green City Streets Construction and Capital approved the plan for this year.
Okay, I believe, I'm not sure what you have in your packets, but I prepared two exhibits for the discussion here. One was, look, exhibit like this? Are those in the packets?
Yep.
Yep, right there. Danny and I have been talking a lot about how to, how to address some of the city's street issues, and as the landlord looking at it, almost like the city has, it's done a lot of street reconstruction probably over the last 25, 25 years. And got some really, really good streets, and you got some streets that aren't so good. And I know, I think last fall or so, your discussions were developing a street reconstruction project of about $2 million, and I think Gary and I had discussed that possibly up to $2.5 million worth of street. And I am, I am proposing a slight deviation from $2.5 million worth of reconstruction, and doing a combination of reconstruction and rehabilitation. And the plan that you have here, we have illustrated those streets that we feel that should be reconstructed first. That would be, you'd provide the contractor to design a North Street between Columbia and Highway 63, there's two blocks there. We would also propose that we design and reconstruct Madison We would also propose that we design and reconstruct Madison from Washington South to Short Street. That's about 1,200 feet. In addition to that, we'd like to address some of the other streets that need some attention before they get to the point of reconstruction, and those would be all the streets shown in the blue, purple, Streets North and Madison are streets that we're proposing to reconstruct. And I think all of those blocks in blue, I think about 23 blocks if I remember right. So the gist of this is we've probably got something like, well, we're pushing 30 blocks of streets that we're going to address and bring into a good condition for $2.5 million or thereabouts, as opposed to about nine blocks of reconstruction. When you look at reconstruction, that $250 to $300 block, and asphalt overlays, in this case, these are mostly concrete streets that we propose to go in and actually crack that old deteriorated concrete and then put a three-inch asphalt overlay on. By cracking it, you're making a flexible type pavement to match the characteristics of the overlay. All of the streets in the northeast would be, they're all concrete, and they would be rehabilitated with that crack and seed and asphalt overlay method. The blue on Madison from Short South to, I believe it was Locust, that would be mill, mill off two to three inches asphalt, and then put a new three-inch asphalt overlay on, so we keep the curb reveal that's there now, there's probably only about three or four inches of curb showing now, and we retain that with the mill and fill. Going down the southern part of town, that portion of these streets out to Franklin, that would again, that's also deteriorated concrete, we would propose to crack and seed that for a three-inch asphalt overlay on it. Walnut Street and Chestnut Streets are both seal coat streets, and we'd like you to try something different than probably what you've used elsewhere, and that'd just be to put a three-inch asphalt cap on top of those seal coat streets. And we've done that many other locations, and have had great success doing that. Stays, you still have the open ditches, but you get a lot more, a lot more bang for the buck, these are pretty narrow, so we're only estimating about $25,000 to $30,000 block for a three-inch asphalt cap on them. And those, those should have pretty good rock bases, they, you know, the seal coat is now, they do well at that, but we retarding those two streets for every year, traffic east and west. The other one, I don't know if you have it, in concert with Danny, we created a street system, collector streets. Right now, by federal functional classifications through the beds, you've only got two streets, two streets that are called collector streets, I think it's Jefferson, west of Highway 63, and then Franklin, east of 63. And then the, the two are two roadways or the two highways adjacent to the future. We've looked at, you know, the traffic patterns of the city and created that system that's in the light blue there to help the city determine priorities. You'd get the most bang for the buck if you put the improvements where the most traffic is. If we can, if we can concentrate the improvements in those areas where those streets are, we can, we can benefit the majority of the community, and it really, really helps in prioritizing the improvements. So when you compare, when you compare the proposed improvements, that system that we've created there, covering a lot of blocks, and you'll see, it'll really make an impact in the community. We're, I don't think you can quite do all of the asphalt work for two and a half months. We really won't know until we get into the design of it. It'll probably, probably be like maybe 18 of those 23 blocks, so we'll need to do some further prioritization after that. I think probably, if you look at Arkansas, it would probably the, there's probably these two-thirds of that would probably wait. That, that's just an example I'm throwing out. As we're, one other thing we're faced with when we're doing asphalt overlays, it's not considered maintenance, so under federal law, you're required to deal with all ADA accessibility issues, so we'll have to go in and look at every ADA ramp in that, in that area, and make sure they comply with current requirements. In addition to that, we'll have to look at, we wanna look at drainage. In particular, Crestview North, the North Street, has some serious drainage problems. There's a huge hole on the west side of the street there that needs to be repaired, and we need to do some things to get water out of that area, and so many other water issues that we may have in there will have to take into consideration also. So that's kind of the gist of the plan. We can do the bulk of it, I think, with two and a half months, including engineering, and that's entertaining any questions you might have.
Think you get better results longevity out of the freshening the concrete and going with the asphalt, as opposed to patching the concrete and going asphalt?
Yeah, that's, I'm quite aware of it.
Rather than breaking up the concrete?
I would have stood up earlier, but I'm a little older than Matt.
Rather than breaking up, you think you get better results from the breaking the concrete up and asphaltment as opposed to patching the concrete?
Yes.
Asphalt?
Well, if you're gonna patch Crestview, you just... The primary problem with the concrete pavement that's out there is it suffers from a phenomenon called de-cracking, and that's a deterioration of the course aggregate within the concrete, and salts and water get into the joints, and it permeates into the, into the course aggregate, and it just turns to mush. And that's why you see it at the joints. So if you repair the joints, you repair one joint, then you've got two joints, and it's just gonna keep migrating back.
Now, some of these streets get pretty heavy bus traffic, it's three inches in that.
Yeah. By, by, when I say crack and seed, in this case, we're almost gonna rubbleize it, so it's going to become a base for the three inches asphalt surface that we're gonna put on.
The three inches is enough buses?
What's that?
Is three enough for the bus traffic?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you gotta, you gotta prepare some base under this, some ready, some base something under it, and we'll just reduce that concrete pavement, it'll still have some concrete strength to it, because it'll still be bound together, and then we'll, but it'll be more flexible, and then that three-inch course of asphalt on top is pretty good strength. Yeah. And buses really aren't that heavy. They don't, you know, there's still only one axle back there, and they're still, they're legal.
It's equal to 900 cars.
Yeah. Well, you're true. Yeah. But that's one of the reasons we targeted that area too, because of the school and the school bus driver.
Well, you said the east end of Arkansas wasn't really that bad. I hope you're taking into consideration the intersection where Arkansas leads South View.
I'm not, I'm only suggesting that. We've been, we've been...
I mean, at least, that intersection, that intersection's bad.
Okay.
Arkansas's, that intersection's bad. And did you find any storm sewers or any thing out in what's on Arkansas? Have you looked at that?
No, not yet.
Have you talked about that on the phone?
Um, my proposal, there's, there's an intake at the northeast corner of Crestview and, and north. Are you talking on the other, up...
Arkansas, that, all the water on Crestview comes from Arkansas.
We have not looked at that yet. No. Only, only pick up that water that's now undermining Crestview just north.
But a lot of that water comes from Arkansas.
Yeah. Okay. We'll certainly look at that.
So the asphalt overlays part, do we have enough curb block to do asphalt overlays where we're proposing it?
Well, all the ones that occur in the concrete that have six inches curb.
Madison does.
For some of these, there will be a saw cut immediately adjacent to the curb face, because we don't wanna, we don't wanna crush the curb, so we'll have a full-depth saw cut, and to rubbleize this where the crack and seed it, there's drop hammers that they drop on the pavement. We don't wanna crush the curb, so we'll separate the curb from the rest of the pavement that's gonna be crack and seeded. Okay. Normally, if we can, if you wanna make a saw cut, an edge notch, about an inch deep adjacent to that saw cut, put a three-inch overlay on, we'll roll it down to two inches on that far edge, and it will be one inch above concrete. So the flow line of the concrete, hopefully, we can retain, befall all that.
So it's gonna be an inch taller than it is now?
It'll be, it'll be that much taller, we'll roll the edge over.
Well, in the portion of Madison, he was talking about asphalt, he was gonna mill off, that's the current asphalt.
I'm, Danny's talking about where it's currently concrete. Madison, we'll just, we'll mill three inches off, put three inches back in, we'll have the same curve.
There's no curb left on, a lot of these streets, there's no curb left.
Right. Hopefully, we can correct some of that, and hopefully, we can correct the, you know, poor drainage at the intersection.
Is there other streets that, if we do it in a timely manner, we could mill and resurface about half of the reconstruct?
Yes, absolutely. But, I mean, this is just part of it. We've also, with Danny, we've talked about doing more crack filling, maintain those asphalt streets that have been overlaid, and keep them in good condition or better longer. Main thing is we keep water out of the base and out of the asphalt overlay itself, because we do that as a sealed crack. We were gonna try to get some streets sealed this year, but they're all busy, so we'll just have to do it in the next spring. Then we're also putting together a seal coat program, about $50,000 with a seal coat program, so we can do about 30, 40 blocks of, of seal coat. So it's a multi, multi approach, a lot of different problems in the community. There's still more to do, this doesn't, this is just some of the worst of them.
At least, at least there's some progress.
Yeah. Well, and as part of the, the pavement management plan that you're, you're gonna consider later, we will identify additional projects in the community, you know, that can be taken care of over the next five, 10, 20 years.
The thing that I noted on this, the buses going along with this, seems like a significant portion of these resources are going to streets to get extraordinarily heavy use from folks who are not city residents, and I think as a council, we just need to look and make sure that that funding is done actively, so that we don't have the, the residents of the city, taxpayers of the city bearing this proportionate amount of that cost.
Yeah.
But the town, he needs to kick in a little.
Yeah?
Something else to throw out there.
That doesn't have anything to do with your designs, but I just...
Any other questions about that proposal? Yeah? Just a discussion.
Like Walnut and Chestnut, you're just talking, doing three inches over what's there, you just gonna go over what's there, I mean, is...
Nope. Walnut and Chestnut, just be three inches over what's there. There may be some patching.
That's what I mean, they're gonna pass the holes and all that before, so we don't have...
That'd be a little bit of prep.
They're a little soft right now after getting one of the water main.
Well, since we're putting three inches on top of what's there, you know, if you can just leave a three-inch jump in there, so we'll probably put a shoulder of, I've used recycled asphalt material, and it gives, makes it look wider, and it provides a pretty good shoulder. That's a lot less expensive than front, put black dirt in there and seed it.
Take what you strip off the mass, you get a huge mass.
Yes. So if that looks good to you, the one thing I wanna talk to you about, North Street, Danny's got that in a lot better condition than it was, and so the original plan on that was to get it designed now, let it, and hopefully, get it built by fall.
I hope you're talking about the west portion of North Street.
I'm talking about those two blocks that are, that are shown on there.
The rest of North Street ain't done nothing to.
Right. Though, in those two blocks, what I'm proposing to you now is not what's in the contract that we have, but wait and design and put in one bid package, all of that that's shown in purple, which is the 1,200 feet on, on Madison. Put that in one bid package, let it this winter, when we, I mean, that's the best time to let it, in January and February, and then for construction next year.
Or even November, December. But yeah, I agree.
I hadn't make, I hadn't make Danny proud, he did it for the winter, so.
I mean, so letting it in the fall for spring work is...
Yeah, exactly.
Because I don't think you're gonna get it done this, this fall.
I don't wanna open up and find out we can't get it done. So next House Meeting, we'll bring back a proposal to design both of those streets at the same time.
And if you did, I think it'd be incredibly expensive.
And then another, another contract to do about a million dollars worth of asphalt overlay. Okay? Sound good?
When do we think we get the rest of the asphalt overlay and the rest of the work? Would that be in the summer then, next year?
Um, I presume it would be next year. It, there's quite a bit of evaluation there from, from the standpoint of just the ADA accessibility, and then drainage issues that have been raised. Also, there are some areas that we do need to patch, need to identify and patch areas of concrete, even though we're gonna rubbleize it once we get it in, but there's some curb that needs to be replaced and things like that, so we just need time to get the evaluation together into bid documents. I doubt if we can do it yet this year. It won't get too much worse over the winter, so we just will bid it when, when the bidding's good. Okay?
We need to approve that now. It was really considered, I don't know what happened, I just wanted to have it, my fault.
Consider approval of agreement with H.R. Green for the pavement management plan.
The, been one of the things that was talked about from the get-go with the proposal. And I mentioned it in the, when I was talking about the, the proposed improvements, and it's, it's, it's one of those things the city really, really needs to do, to figure out, before you figure out where you're gonna go, you gotta figure out where you are. And there's a number of elements that go into proper asset management, I don't care whether it's pavement, sewers, or water, or whatever. And what we propose to do in here, with this project, is to, one, we will develop proper maintenance practices for the city for both asphalt and concrete pavements. We will develop a toolbox of strategies for what to do with your pavements, from reconstruction, major and minor rehabilitation. Major rehabilitation would be like the three-inch asphalt overlays we're talking about, and, and then something like that, or minor rehabilitation, which may be thin lifts of asphalt or something like that, on down to restoration and preservation techniques. Restoration may be, may be as minor as seal coats, things that you do just to preserve the pavement, you're not adding any structure to it, you're just doing things to maintain it. And then there's, we will, once we establish that toolbox that's applicable to the city for both concrete and asphalt pavements, then we will, will have, will establish treatment selection criteria. By that, I mean, what, what conditionment is the roadway in that dictates the, the different treatments that might apply to it. And then we'll also create calculations for the treatment cost for each of those, each of those different alternatives. We're also gonna do a data analysis. The city, the city recently purchased software from the Iowa Pavement Management Program, software called D-TIMs, and it's a very expensive, the state bought the license, and then they just issue keys and licenses to, to local agencies for, I think it was like $2,000 for the city to buy that software. The data is provided free by the state, it's collected every two years, and it's automated, it's automatically collected by a moving van that has all kinds of sensors on it, that distresses multiple, it records multiple distresses with the pavements, be it asphalt or concrete, and all of that data is analyzed with that software program the city purchased. We will use that... We will use that software for the city to do that data analysis and come back with a, uh, it's an objective way to look at roadway improvements as opposed to a subjective analysis by an individual thinking this is a higher priority or this one. It takes out that, that's, that subjective view and gives you a, a good look at all of the pavements in the city and, and, and gives a recommendation. Now, you can't just take that at face value. You have to look at it from a realistic standpoint and do some, do some checking in the field to make sure what you're getting, uh, from the data analysis is really correct. But it really helps you look at the whole system in a holistic situation, so. Um, we'll, we'll, we will look at the data. We will create life cycle costing, life cycles for the various pavements. Every pavement is somewhere within its lifetime. Uh, with the older concrete pavements, it's presumed they have about a thirty-five year life. Uh, that doesn't mean they're dead at the end of thirty-five years. You can go in and rehab those and extend the life, rehab them again, keep it extended life, but at some point in time, it's wore out and you gotta reconstruct it. And you've got some pavements like that. Um, we'll look at, at pavement condition thresholds. And by that, I mean, what, what do you want to achieve? What level of service do you want your streets, individual streets, to provide? We'll help you determine what that threshold would be. That gives you the service level that you want to try to achieve with your program. Um, then, then, the, the whole end of that is we'll give you, recommend street improvements and cost that you can develop your, your five-year street programs and ten-year street programs by, it's kind of a five or ten-year rolling program. Um, but all of that, all of that we propose to include in, in, in a proposal. It's pretty darn cheap at five thousand dollars, but some of this stuff is stuff that we've developed in other communities so we can provide it to you significantly, yeah, so. Um, enough on that. You're gonna get, uh, you're gonna get quite a report in there.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
H.R. Green presents that date on the East Street Bridge Project.
Um, this one, you've already talked significantly about it, I think. Um, and I think you discovered a problem that doesn't appear like a cover's gonna work. At least not the one that the design, you know, did. Because the, uh, eighteen-inch sanitary sewer that's in the way sits about two and a half, three feet above the whole line of Culver. And, uh, so then you considered putting in a bridge, uh, in lieu of Culver. And, uh, I think your attorney's recommendation is that if you can do it for less, it can be done by, or change it, correct? Okay? Um, Danny was in the office, uh, several weeks ago and he and I visited with Stan Stahl Smith, who's our chief bridge designer in our office. And, uh, there's, there's any number of different bridges that could be proposed. And the one we looked at, Darren had proposed a beam and slab bridge that's been built in Crystal County. And it might work, but we can make it work. Uh, but there are some other options too. Um, one of, one of the things we, we need to keep in consideration is there's, there's only certain bridges that can be built, correct? And we wanna, we wanna figure out which ones that Bloomfield Bridge and Culver can build and then make a recommendation on a, uh, on a bridge to design and get constructed out there. It does make it a lot simpler. We don't have to go through the bidding process and keep costs down. And our visit with, with, uh, with Stan, I think the, you know, I think we should be able to get in under the price of that culver. So, um, I guess that, that's kind of where we're at. We'll, we'll have that conversation between with Darren and Stan, find out what kind of bridges that we can consider and, uh, make a recommendation for council on, on that and then hopefully get a bridge designed.
Is this the one we had public comment on?
Yeah.
So just kind of for my application, I know we've got a lot of city staff here. What, can anyone let me know what happened with that?
With the sewer?
Yeah, why, why we had to redesign it?
I think it was just overlooked. I don't, when it was designed, I don't think they knew the sanitary sewer was size. I, I have to presume.
Did we not have it mapped? Is that...
So, yeah, French Reniker was involved. This is the changeover, part of the changeover through the engineers. So we had French Reniker that actually did the locate of, you know, the physical location of all the utilities and that kind of stuff. And we ended up wanting to, uh, bid out the Culver project, the Chive, so the change between Chive and French Reniker, but then French Transport, basically we got it designed without the physical location of the sanitary sewer. So, once this came to, I think it's actually after, I think when the contractor brought it up, the Chive said, this isn't gonna work. You know, we gotta move this, they go up with different designs to basically build it through. And then that's not gonna work, another option too, so we decided to disress the Culver and go to the bridge.
So that's something we should be looking to French Reniker for, or?
I guess not. More of Chive. I mean, French Reniker's been the stuff, passed, I mean, Chive, go back on Chive and, and.
Are they the ones that should have, I mean, we had it, it, that line is mapped and did we do it?
It has a move. So they do is there, they came and did the design, they did all the, I mean, they did all kinds of data analysis collection. I mean, all the stuff they normally do for design. I mean, it did even boring for, you know, for base and everything else, so it's, uh. We ended, uh, we ended up mapping it ourselves in GIS net just to put it in and give it to them so that it has an overlay and say, here, this is where it was, you know, after the fact, but then we move it in there and did, and said, hey, if you thought the grade wasn't correct, so. She, if you wanna take legal action on it, that's where we gotta go with that.
How much did we pay Chive?
For design, she's looking at basically about five percent of the contract of what was, is the, uh, design. She's about, what's that? Three hundred, three hundred thousand projects, who, who came out of?
Oh.
Fifteen thousand, I think, somewhere around there. But then we end up having to pay an extra three thousand, we paid an extra three thousand to do the design around the Culver. She paid about eighteen thousand dollars in design fees.
Yes, I can't give you a reason why.
Have we paid them yet? Discussion led by H.R. Green regarding ordinances governing the sidewalks around the square.
Um, Danny's indicated to me that there's been some interest in property owners around the square to replace the sidewalk. And the current ordinance creates, uh, an issue because it says that the, uh, sidewalk, the grade ordinances, uh, are established by, uh, see the most accurate. Do you have a county amendment?
Got a sidewalk ordinance?
Yep, that's the one. Um, you have one of my edits?
Yep.
Okay. We go down to seven, item seven says, in sidewalk standards, it has established grade. It said, curb, curb tops shall be level with the center line of the street, which shall be the established grade. And in this case, uh, downtown, the, uh, the established grade is lower than the sidewalks. So you can't get the sidewalks above grade. And, uh, my recommendation to resolve that problem is to remove this line out of the sidewalk standards. That, that's nothing to do with construction sidewalks and where they're at and all this stuff. It, uh, it's an inappropriate guidance by the, the comment that I made there, and I'll just read it. That this section should be removed because it is unnecessary to establish top curb elevations in the sidewalk regulations. Also, it stands that it's not appropriate for the center line elevation of roadways to establish a cross slope percent. Typically, it's two percent cross slope. And for most roadways, the cross slope is less than the normal six-inch curb height. Thirty-one foot wide street at two percent cross slope, someone like three and a half inches of, of height. So it's, uh, the six-inch curb, the six-inch, uh, crown height was typically established for gravel roads, SealCo roads, or brick roads, certainly not concrete or asphalt roads. So it's an inappropriate establishing grade, um, that way. But most of it, inappropriately, is having it within a sidewalk section. And that's, that just creates the problems in the downtown area. So if you eliminate that inappropriate sentence in there, eliminates the problems with maintaining the sidewalks in the, uh, in the downtown area.
Our biggest problem is we need new curbs and you need to build the sidewalk to the curb.
That's true.
Does this only affect the downtown area?
Um, yes.
So, uh, this is our sidewalk ordinance, shouldn't we put something in there that this only spurs the downtown?
Stick that out, have to do the side of it.
So it doesn't have anything to do with any sidewalk in town?
Well, it, 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 it doesn't, it's just not necessary to have. If you establish a grade, I don't know, I don't know, if you're establishing a street grade in the sidewalk ordinance. It just says the curb tops shall be level with the center line of the street, which is established grade.
Most places, that's irrelevant where your sidewalk's fifteen foot from your street.
I, I don't know why you're establishing street grades in sidewalks.
Well, I think probably what it was in there for was to make sure your sidewalk was the curb height.
Um, that's mentioned in eight.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. If taking, does taking that out affect anything else?
No. No, section eight just says the street edge of the sidewalk shall be at elevation, even with, I add a top of curb at the curb or not less than one and a half inch above the curb for each foot between the curb and sidewalk. So that means in the downtown area where the sidewalk is adjacent to the curb is level with curb. And if it's in the residential area and it's ten feet back, uh, then it's, uh, six inches above the side, top of curb.
There's some places where the sidewalks, it's on top of the curb or on the square.
It's on top of the curb?
On the south side of the square, there's places where the sidewalk's on top of the curb.
You know, the north side's got a patch over there too, where the water behind the, that one, sidewalk.
Now, the one thing you have to be careful about downtown is the cross slope. Um, that may be a problem that can't be addressed with just replacing it as it is. And you can't put it back in if it has more than, than a two percent cross slope.
Now, I've seen some different towns do their sidewalks differently, and we've got about ten or eleven-foot sidewalk. It all doesn't have to be, that whole eleven foot doesn't have to be ADA, right?
Um, and you're talking about around the square?
Yeah.
No.
So can you make, like, the portion away from the curb be ADA and then morph the portion against the buildings to match the doorways? Because they're all different heights.
I'm doing projects like that right now in the downtown area where we, like, three-foot area back of the curb, it's typically where your signage goes and things like that. Um, you can have that more than that. I, I like to keep it to no more than five percent cross slope. That's the, that's the maximum running slope in an accessible route. So if people are walking from the parking area to the sidewalk, five percent inlet. Uh, so yeah, you can vary that a little bit.
So you, you'd wanna keep the, the curb portion ADA compliant and then let the, the building portion?
Yeah.
Adjust?
Yeah. And you could, I, I guess I'm not sure how wide the sidewalks are downtown. You might actually be able to do a little bit more than that, three foot. But it helps you out quite a bit. Now, you, um, I mentioned that you need to try to not exceed the two percent cross slope in the sidewalk. But you're in an existing condition. That should not prohibit you from maintaining those walks in a good and safe condition. And there may be instances where you do exceed that two percent cross slope. I think probably all you need to do is document, in fact, you know, what's more than that? It'll be corrected, you know, at some point in time when the street is reconstructed or whatever. You, you've got the hand you're dealt with right now. You should not be forced to maintain a dangerous situation by having tripping hands and small things. You can, you can exceed the limits.
I think what we need to do a lot of places around the square is go cut out two to three foot of the parking away from the curb and replace, and same thing behind the curb, and replace that stretch with new curb. And we've got a lot of places where the curb is disintegrated and maybe a couple foot each way. Establish a new curb and then replace the sidewalk. Yeah, for that.
By Iowa code, you can replace up to five hundred feet of curb, uh, without, um, you know, without worrying about any type of cost per bidding type of thing. Um, I don't know that I would suggest that you piece it in like that. It's possible you could, you could raise, you could raise something, or at least put a higher curb height on or something. You know, some of that excessive cross slope. I'm not sure how much cross slope you have in the sidewalks downtown. The one Danny replaced at Northwest Corner, that's pretty flat stuff there.
Yeah.
None of the other, none of the rest of them seem to be too bad. Um, I might, just a couple of the comments in regard to the revisions that are in here. You know, the second sheet, um, section nine there talks about cross slope I just mentioned in the, this. If you, the, the maximum cross slope is two percent when you're constructing sidewalk. At this two-point-zero-one percent, you're out of compliance. There is no construction tolerance that allows you to exceed that two percent. And so I put in there that, that the sidewalks have a nominal, uh, cross slope of three-sixteen, seven inch per foot. That's approximately one and a half percent cross slope. And then a maximum of one-quarter inch per foot, which was the way it was, was where it was before. You don't wanna have a go-in at a quarter, at a quarter inch per foot for a period that might be slightly over that. So design it for slightly less and the maximum is a half inch per foot. Half inch per foot is two percent. The, the other one I changed is the very last one dealing with ramps. And the old, it referenced code section, Iowa code section two-sixteen, C point nine. And that's been revised, and so I revise all of that to meet current language. Uh, previously, it said that the city would construct two curb ramps for every block of street and this type of thing. And that's, that's a purpose requirement for the city. You just need to put in curb ramps in sloped areas wherever the sidewalks cross, or meet a street, road, or whatever it says for Iowa. And leave it at that. The language that I use in there is directly out of the Iowa code. Um, these are not intended to be ordinance-ready, but I would recommend you have an ordinance drafted to, uh, to make those changes.
I put this on there to talk about it because the biggest thing is after we did the one on grain bin, we've actually had two other, uh, businesses that's wanting quotes now, wanting to put those in sidewalks in. So that's why I wanted to bring that up and talk about that. So one thing I recommend and talk to Larry about also as well, if we do some of the other sidewalks on the squares, maybe put in a two-inch conduit behind the curb for possible lighting in the future. And then also replace the, uh, make sure the, the, you know, the water, water stops are all, have, uh, stainless steel stems. So we'll, you know, have to change out those, those, uh, water stops. So. Which are about a hundred dollars apiece.
Are we talking about the city doing more sidewalks on the square?
No, I'm just saying if, if we allow the businesses to do those, we would require them to put in the conduit and a hundred dollars for the, for the water stop to do that, so. All the services are new. They were put in about ninety-four. I think most of the services were done, but, uh, yet they don't have the stainless steel sketch. We'd have to change the curb, the curb stop. So we can do those, about a hundred dollars apiece to put those in and then put the conduit in behind the, the, in case we can do it in future lighting, we can set that around.
One other I had about, I was doing through here is through this, uh, and that's number six. It still talks about location of residential walk, residential walks. Are the walks now located on the front? Are the walks now located on the property line? Wherever I've ever been before, they're about all kind of, about a foot off the property line allows like the curb box to be placed on the property line. Because in this case, it'd even probably be in sidewalks more often than not. I don't, I was just curious if that's actually where the sidewalks are.
They're all, I think they're similar someplace.
They're, they're, probably not a lot of new ones doing it anyway, so most of it's going to be replacement.
Do a lot of tear them out so they don't have to shovel them and maintain them.
Considering discussed a contract for grant application assistance with Area 15 Regional Planning Commission, RPC, good development, uh, community development, block grant, application for wastewater facility improvements.
Hi, I'm Holly Berg with Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. And first up is the contract for grant application assistance. Essentially, as a member of, a member of City of Area 15 RPC, we offer grant writing assistance for this type of grant at no cost. Uh, but the caveat being that if you receive the grant, because we go through a lot of, a lot of hours to turn in the grant, that you then will contract with us for the grant administration services. So, uh, the grant itself, we don't charge anything for the grant writing, uh, but then there'd be that administration if the grant is successful. Then any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Pretty standard.
Yeah. Which I know a lot of times.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Contract and discuss, considering discussed a contract for environmental review services with Area 15 RPC to provide supporting materials to the affirmation of CDVG application.
So, uh, one of the things that needs to be done to apply for the grant is an environmental review, uh, that meets the CDVG requirements for the project. Uh, back in the day, it used to be that you could always do this after you received the grant, but they, you really, these days, they want it done ahead of time because they want to know it's a shovel-ready project. Uh, they want to know that if you're going to receive the money, it's a project that can actually, that there's not something that's going to come up and make the project no longer feasible. So essentially, you gotta do it on the front end to be able to, to play in the project. So, uh, with this, we will have everything, uh, done that can be done in advance to show that it's a shovel-ready project.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Consider approval of pass estimate number two to loss of construction amount forty thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and five cents for the proposed water main and wastewater improvement. Vision one, water main will go up.
Matt Walker from FR, uh, Fr. Trucker's here to certify that the work's been completed.
Yeah, this is for water services and mains leak on East Street. They've already got all of the main in on East and Chestnut. Uh, it was pressure tested today in the past. Uh, they are fluorinating it. They're going to jump over to South Street and start pot holding and then they'll come back once it meets the bacteria test to do the service installation.
Go-getters. What was that? I said they're go-getters.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consider and discuss the USDI engineer proposal for the city utility gas mapping for an estimated cost of fourteen thousand three hundred and five dollars.
You should have a copy of that proposal in there. There's other costs in there talking about the GIS software and all that. We're not going for that right now. The biggest thing is going with the mapping and the modeling, uh, portion of that. We could maybe keep that money down a bit too because we're going to try to do a lot of a little more preliminary work and send them documentation to help with the mapping. So some of that cost was based, approximate cost based on our issue, so we're going to try to get it down. This is one of the things we actually budgeted for this this year. Uh, I know we talked before about we have the gas mains that are dislocated. We have three of them right now that we need to potentially look at, you know, and we go back to part of this modeling, mapping, and basically this is an engineer fee. So the engineers will, you know, look at the design, see if we need to replace those three. We need to, you know, move them, do them different, are they right size, all that kind of stuff. And also as a utility, you know, we're required to keep maps and, and stuff up to date. And so this would actually start bringing us into the new century with more electronic and digital max. Right now, everything we have is on paper. So this will get us into more GIS technology. And we, we'll talk more about that in the future with some other, uh, programs we have working on. So, and we've been doing some GIS mapping as we go too. That's why some of the data, everybody knows with PMSA, requirements are changing every, almost day to day with, you know, for PMSA. Right now, you know, it's gas, it's point of entry. We have to barcode scan and map everything that goes into the ground at the time in case it's a recall on a, on a valve or something. We have to be able to go locate it, pull back up, pick it up. So part of this modeling and mapping is, is, is to be in compliance with a lot of those changes that are coming out. So as, as a utility, we just have to continue to make progress with, with our system.
Is this the only service that's doing this?
Correct, yeah. USDI is out of here, again, it's just an engineer that's in the local area. There's other engineers in the country like you, but HRG, like we talked with them, they don't have that service available for them. So kind of electrical or whatever, so we're using this local engineer to do this project.
There isn't anybody local or in the area that does this, you said, right? I'd like to know. Just thinking about getting another bid.
Well, it's right. Well, being a professional service engineer, fees, you're not required to have a second bid.
I didn't say you had to be required.
Right.
I was just curious if somebody else can get one.
I mean, I, we could have KMG out of Kansas, maybe, get a bid.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I don't care what they want to do, I'm just saying, usually keep shit long as can get bids.
We've been working with these guys for quite a while. They actually do a lot of work with Todd on, I mean, he calls him a lot when he has that question about sizing of meters on houses, you know, this residential, but on commercial and that kind of stuff. So we do a lot of work with them, so. He's just somebody we're used to working with and does real good work.
Would it go with this or get another bid and bunch of systems there and discuss? Yeah. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Consider approval of purchase for gas division remote methane leak detector with Bluetooth for fifteen thousand.
And again, this is another budgeted item we had. We've got multiple quotes on that. You have two quotes there. Another one, this is made by Heath, so there's no, the only manufacturer, you can't get a quote for the same item because it's the proprietary data. So there's another methane kind of comparable in there, it's twenty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. So this is the, uh, less of the two. And this is actually, we've, we've had this one. The other one's not in production yet, it won't be produced until January. This one we've had, demonstrated and used this one. Again, going back to gas, there are leak surveys and stuff required to do to be in PMSA compliance. And this will help us, uh, stay in compliance and have, again, newer equipment to stay in compliance, get, start getting mapping and tracking more of that.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Consider acknowledgement of future gas purchase, EPA program, twenty-nine, win twenty-twenty.
Again, that's in your package to look at. That shows us basically we, you know, we pre-purchased gas, so it's in that time of year again to purchase our next order of gas through the winter there, see the months that it's used. And so that's just kind of a requirement for us to have to use.
That's not in our package.
Oh, it's in yours, Barry. Thank you for your suggestion. You just thought of it.
It was on, on line.
Oh.
It was here. It came up when I pulled it up on the computer.
November nineteenth, December nineteenth, January twenty?
Yep. It's it. PMSA was addressed to me. I probably should have seen it before now. July thirtieth, one of his names. Addressed to me.
That was the date she had on it. She had, she sent it to me and I had, I sent it back to her to change it to you on there and it was sent to, Sandy got it on the sixth to put it in the package. And that's when she put it in the package on the sixth. Yeah.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider give direction to draft development agreement with Central Massage and Spile LLC.
We've received a request, um, from Central Massage to, uh, get a TIF rebate. That rebate calculated to be approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars a year. Um, that is a recognition of a seventy-five percent of the actual total increment based upon this year's assessed valuation and the increment caused by the renovations of the building and the new assessed valuation that's been attached. Um, the development agreement would be, actually be put together by Ailer's associate. But the real issue here is, is that there's been discussion through Main Street to talk about the utilization of an additional incentive, the man is just to give some sort of rebate on the water sewer bill. We also explored the idea of doing that with electric and gas, but based upon Heather's advice, it seemed to be very complicated, if not inappropriate, to do it under state law as far as electric and gas. So realistically, our, our choices are to give a, an abatement on the water sewer bill. So before you is, what is the percentage? If it's all or none or something in between? And secondly, for what period of time would you want to give that abatement? Again, with the TIF program, we would be doing what would be a common circumstance here, and that is to do a TIF rebate to property taxes on the increment for a period of ten years. I'm not saying that that should be the same thing as far as your water sewer bill, but then I also don't know if there's been any, we, we haven't had any discussion about doing this, other than that that it's been recommended by Main Street that we do something. So it's been brought for you tonight to give us consideration in this regard as far as the water sewer. Length of time and what percentage? And I'm assuming that whatever you establish here may very well be the template for future rebates that you would consider on the same type of program.
It's in the package. I don't feel probably we should implement the Main Street thing yet because it hasn't been decided on, basically. I'm not saying down the road once it's decided through Main Street what they're wanting to do, that they can't get it, but I don't think, till we just, till Main, till that whole deal's done, I don't think we want to set precedents for that. You're talking about the EV committee thing with all that. I'd say that's not finalized.
I, I know, but we got this out here. I mean, maybe the, the alternative would be is that you revisit it once the EV committee's made the recommendation, you've accepted it.
Yeah, I mean, I have an issue making a decision on the TIF part of that, but I don't think, I think we can revisit it when we get, when the EV committee thing gets finalized for the sewer water. For utility portion, I guess you could say, whatever that is.
Well, again, my, my speculation is based upon what we have with Heather's is that you really talking about water sewer. Gas, electric is far more regulated by the state. Doing those rebates is probably not. We can control water sewer, that's why it's, it's the option. If you want to indicate that you come back to it, that's fine. I know these folks are probably looking at it, but I know that they're willing to go ahead with the TIF project.
I think till like, yeah, I don't, I think till Main Street or till that, the EV committee thing gets done, I think the, I don't have a problem with the TIF portion of it. I think we probably ought to wait on the utility side of it till that deals decide people from direction, uh, to give a little more of a correction from the, maybe.
I guess I'm a little lost. What's the request?
The request?
Yeah.
What are we? Yeah, we don't have nothing in front of us about it.
So the, the, the TIF request is a standard. We, we've done this before. The real issue is, what do you want to do about water sewer? If you want to defer that, that's fine.
The request is they're asking for reduction in their property taxes by seventy-five percent for the next ten years.
Of the increment?
Of the increment.
Not, not the entire tax, but just the increment.
So the value before and the value now, the increment, they want a reduction of seventy-five percent of that for the next two years.
Which is approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars.
That's the request. So it's just an abatement?
Yes.
Basically. It is, but it's TIF, so it's not called an abatement. Because you can't do TIF and abatements at the
a couple of our shops who have fuel siphoning and copper theft, and then, but we've actually had PDs been there to, to look at some of that stuff, so, I mean, I guess I'll say that much.
I think we need to have some in the office areas, too. Maybe even like the generator room, just.
I agree with that.
Motion activated, just, you know, cash boxes and stuff like, I mean, just.
So we probably need, and a quote on.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Equipment in what it talks, get it set up.
Yeah, indoor.
We have a lot of money right now.
Yeah, we spent a lot of money, I'll tell you, though, they're, they're valuable, and we spent a lot of money on the bank, we use Bank Turnkey as the name of the company for ours, and, but, between the cameras and servers, having the folks come in to get them set up right.
The library has them, the pool has them, we we just don't have it here, so.
The rec center has them. I'd probably get two or three. The people you call to give estimates will probably have a good recommendation on where to put them, how we need to put in. I don't think we need, I think we just need motion, I don't know that we need to go voice activated, or voice, I think we just need to be able to see what's going on. So I suppose.
Please make sure you come back.
Yeah, getting some estimates on that. Consider approval of separation agreement with city administrator.
Gary and I have had the opportunity to talk about the payout of his, remaining compensation and the vacation pay that he will be entitled to after he passes his two-year employment mark, and Heather's tentative agreement.
Non-tennis agreement.
On a document that would terminate the employment effective tomorrow with the payout and this remaining compensation through September 22nd, and the approved vacation at 8% of 7%. We think Council has had a copy of the document, Gary and I have both reviewed it, so, being action item, the, the document.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Shouldn't that be a voice?
Oh, you mean a roll call?
Roll call? I don't know, I'm asking the attorney.
Darren?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Earl?
No.
Consider and discuss appointment of interim city administrator. Tomorrow being the last, Gary's last day here, I think we need, we need to have that position. Move with point, the mayor is the interim city administrator until we can make other rate. For a second.
A second.
Earl?
No.
Jack?
No.
Darren?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
What would you guys like to do with that position?
Where do we have that?
What are you going to do with that position?
I would like to get someone that is able to take the work and, on a limited basis.
Tomorrow? There's nobody available to do that for right off, you got to have somebody to do it for a short time, but you find somebody. I guess the rest of the agenda, we just won't put to, because, again, if we don't have that position, we ain't got the rest of the year, so. Motion to approve claims.
Motion to approve claims.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments? Reports, Gary?
I want to thank the staff that provided incredible service to the city during my time, assisting me and the friendship that I've developed with, with you folks, and also, shout out to the community in and of itself. I'm hopeful for Bloomfield in the future, and I hope that the endeavors that the city undertakes.
Thank you. Look, thank you for your service to us, too, for the time you're here.
Thank you.
Brenda?
The May and June bank statements have been reviewed, Earl spent some time in the office last week going through those months, and then, as was discussed earlier in the meeting, with the sewer rate increase, it is effective for the July, the consumption for the month of July. Those bills will be prepared and mailed out later, this next week coming up, they will show that great increase, and the bills will go out with the line showing the piece of the increase that is designated for the sewer plant upgrade. So we are hopeful that that will allow for transparency and help our citizens better understand what they are seeing when they do see that increase in statements.
Thanks. Danny?
Yeah, last week we had the protective services, security advisor from Department of Homeland Security here last week doing an assessment, we'll have a report on that , a brief here in the future, and then also today, we actually had our High Workers' Comp Association, ICAP, or representative here, we did a walkthrough on our physical, our facilities, and there'll be a brief out on that, too. Other than that, probably works, been working real hard the last couple of weeks, CBG grants, you can see we're going, keeping that moving, and, so, just, a lot of activity there, a lot of things going on, we're getting more projects starting, so, I'd just like to thank them for their patience, and they've been working hard at it, so, again, I'd like to thank Gary for his leadership and why we've been here, so, appreciate that, and then, I think the other comment, I think, I'll save that later, we're good, so, that's all I have.
Chris?
As you requested, I've been working on the document outlining where we are in different processes and prioritizing them, along with what I think the next steps are, and then resources to, to utilize in that process, in those processes, it's not complete yet, but I've got a good chunk of it done, along the way, I've also been working with staff, and it was indicated at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, in terms of, you know, as things were kind of shifted during that meeting, I've been trying to get those staff members up to speed. The, one of the, I think that, one of the things that you have in front of you is the blueprint from Cadmus, you know, should you move forward with the energy independence plan, I think it's pretty well laid out, and I think that it, that document will provide a lot of direction to, to whoever may take this seat. So, I guess, like, Gary, I want to thank you all for the opportunity I've had here, you know, I never expected that, several years ago, when I was asked to work on the streetscape project, that it would result in mine, working for the city and getting involved in something that I've enjoyed so much, so, it's been life-changing for me, and I've enjoyed it, I've enjoyed working with all of you and the staff, it's been, been really good, so.
You, thanks. Cancel abates? Move to, sure. All in favor? All in. Chris?
I think I have.
11A.
11A.
I'm here, yeah, I, it's not, I'm ready to move out.
We'll just wait until you talk.
Probably be mostly hit out today.
It's late for days, but we'll get, yeah, we got it, it's kept it off our house today, so.
Chris? Did you put 11A on there?
I thought you were reading leggy.
Yeah, well, I put that on there.
We're not informed of that.
I.